I need to gavel. No, she's, no, she's, she's on. Oh, she said she was gonna start, that's what she said.
I did say that. Is everybody there? Is everybody here in person and on Zoom?
Councilwoman Allen, yes, everyone is present and accounted for.
Except Chuck.
Except Councilman Nelson, who's on his way to Tennessee.
I'm sorry, is Chuck zooming?
Probably not.
And we think he's not coming.
Okay, let's get started then. Tonight's study session is going to cover revenues, finance and payroll, purchasing, IT, the print shop, local match, and the solicitor. So I think we turn it over to Lisa to begin. And Michael Pease, who is there in person, will lead the discussion. I don't know if anybody else is on Zoom, but thanks to council and to any and all from the administration for coming into this session two days before Thanksgiving. So I'll mute myself. Frank, you want to mute me, and then we'll have Lisa begin.
Okay, Kathy Doyle's here, and she's going to speak about the solicitor's budget for a few moments, and that's on page 25 of your budget book. This one.
Is that it up on screen?
Yes, it's up on screen as well.
All right, good evening. So this is the 2023 budget for the Solicitor's Office. And Lisa will probably be able to explain some things better than I will. But some of the things that we talked about today is professional services. These are outside counsel positions, conflict of interest. If the Solicitor's Office has to have outside counsel for whatever reason, those, if you'll see on that preliminary budget, it's a zero, those are gonna go through the Eldrickin Law Firm moving forward, and Lisa can explain that a little bit better than I can. The, if you'll see, most of everything else is, remain the same. I believe that the 2022 salaries where we had a, we had someone that was, what was the difference in that, Lisa? There was a reduction in staff. We had a staff person.
Yeah, I think you had an opening for a while, didn't you?
Yes, so that would be the change, but you can see it's been consistent throughout.
How many salaries are included in that where it says salaries?
That's down at the bottom of the page. You wanna scroll up a little bit? There's four people in that office.
Yeah, we have.
So that's the total?
An admin, an executive administrative staff, we have a paralegal, I'm the full-time attorney, and we have two, Ed Betza and Gary Visceco. The other thing that kind of fluctuates in our budget is the other services and charges. These are things like court costs, appraisals, if we have a deposition, we have to, in a litigation case, we have to pay the stenographer. So those fees are kind of, they kind of fluctuate. As well as if we have a grievance and there's an arbitration, the arbitration fees comes out of the solicitor's budget. And before I, if you have any questions, I just wanted to let the group know that I will, I am leaving the city unfortunately. I've accepted a position at PNC, so I've really enjoyed working with all of you, and I've really enjoyed my time at the city, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for your service.
Lisa's in. Yeah, offer I can't refuse. Lisa, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, there really aren't any changes in this budget except to, like I said, transfer, or like Kathy said, transfer the professional services will be charged through the Eldrickin bill now, and that's the only difference.
Where does that show up?
That shows up in the general fund budget under professional fees.
Gary Visceco? He does a lot of contracts, and he's worked with Lisa with the ARP funding.
He's been invaluable with the ARP interpretations and the contracts. We had, we had to send out contracts to everybody that's encumbered to receive funds so far. All of those community development initiatives and the EDDC, everybody that we've given money to, we've had to have a contract, so he reviews those for us.
He also works with Chris Groner on a lot of the loans.
All right, anything else on the legal? We've got a lot to go over tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Kathy. And good luck.
Take easy.
Okay, page 29, Office of the Director, that's the Finance Director Office, and this is just the salary and some office supplies and charges for the Director of Finance. No movement on that. Any questions? Do I get half of it? I, I don't, no, I don't get any of that. Okay, page 32, the Office of Accounts, Finance and Budget. That would be all the accountants and the, from the finance accountants and the accountants that pay the, pay the bills and balance the bank racks and all of that. So they're really, the staffing is down one person because Chris Moore was moved from Accounting, Finance and Budget to HR. And you'll notice that their budget is up a position, the risk manager was moved from the one budget to the other. So we did not decrease our budget, we just moved someone. She's in the purchasing budget, we'll be getting to that. Yeah. And, yeah, nothing's really any different here. Let's see, we've got office supplies, operating supplies. We, we didn't use any education and training in 20 and 21, but I do want to send people to the GFOA trainings and possibly our Central Square trainings this year. So GFOA has some really great developmental classes for government finance officers. So that's the only addition to the budget from last year to this. Any questions on finance? Okay, the, the next page, 33, is payroll. We've got three payroll clerks, but one of them is dedicated to police, so paid out of their budget. So this is our senior and lead payroll clerks, and we haven't changed any of their budgets from what we used and what they received last year. And let me tell you, they got the checks done this morning.
Good job.
Yeah, that's, that's unheard of. But we had, we had to get the checks done for, before Thanksgiving, and they needed to be in people's bank accounts tomorrow, so they did a fantastic job, the finance staff and the payroll staff. Okay, page 34 is IT. This one's a little more interesting. If you want to, also, you can turn to page 20 in your council handout book, and it has some information on what we've, what we plan on spending the money for.
Is that on page 20?
Page 20, and, yeah. So we, we held the line on the office supplies, consumables, repair and maintenance, professional services. The accounts of interest are, there's, there's three accounts, 40, 45, and you'll see on page 20, there's a list of different things that go into that. That's the communication account, so that's paying for our internet, our cell phones and hotspots, and our web hosting. That's 15,000, 647. 40, 56, repair and maintenance services. There's a lot of contracts in there, a lot of subscriptions in there. There's antivirus for all the computers and servers, anti-spam, the phone system maintenance agreement, the firewall maintenance agreement, virtual server management, the network management software, software, AS service, CityGrow, there, there are other types of software, CityGrow's, Ecode, Adobe, all those subscriptions for things like that. And we've got 10,000 of other miscellaneous costs. This isn't all, the entire amount here, but the, the bulk of it. We have taken on a lot of, we, we've acquired a lot of extra software and service programs, and I, I could give you a list of them. I mean, we have them here. We've, we're also looking at, well, that's in the next one, let's see, I have some information from IT that gives me the, all the subscriptions that were, and, and service programs.
Who makes that decision? The IT people?
Not necessarily the IT people. The, the directors are looking for a particular service and they, they, and, and normally, everything we add is adding value to the city. I mean, over the last several years, we've added a lot, our web activity has gone up considerably, our, our social media presence has gone up considerably, we have more programs that we're using to take payments online, and, let's see, I think the police and fire software for reporting incidents is being changed up this year. This coming year, we are going to be upgrading to a digital timekeeping system, which will allow us to schedule our people online and keep track of the overtime and sick vacation pay, all of that, and do everything online and interface with payroll in a more efficient manner. We're also upgrading the fire department's tracking software. Code enforcement is working on a software upgrade to bring five or six systems that they store data in all into one and use geo-tracking. We're also upgrading our Finance Plus software, which is a few years behind. We're, we're kind of in, on an old version, and we're upgrading to the newest version of that. That'll allow us hopefully to utilize some workflow modules and streamline some of our processes. So, yeah, all of that costs money though. There's a maintenance agreement attached to each one, and we've gotten some of the first years waived and paid for by ARP funds, but, or other grants, but eventually, we, we end up paying the bills.
So that's up about 46,000, but I noticed the service charges is down about 40,000, the next line too.
Yeah, the other services, back to page 20, those, they're, those are licenses for, like, every, all of the computers to use Microsoft Office, phone line recording system, replacement computers, replacement monitors, printers, laptops, that's just basically hardware. And we've cut that a little bit. Most of our, any, anything that needs replacing in the way of hardware, I mean, we buy about, we buy about 20 computers every year and have been since I started, so. Normally, they're, normally, they're, they're not, they're salvage, I mean, they're not, computers, we don't, we don't, we don't usually replace anything until it's
Until it's ready to
Not useful anymore, until it's reached the end of its useful life. I will have to find that out for you.
The multicultural center?
Yeah.
MCRC now? Technology's expensive, and the city has been behind in the time, so now we have to play catch-up, so we didn't think it was gonna be a cheap expense, so it's just kind of shocking to see the numbers when you have to look at them.
Well, not included in this is the phone system. Yeah, the, the phone system is not in here, and let me see if I can find that. It's $175,000. Brian, Brian King's been asking for a new phone system for at least 10 years. Just, I, I installed that same phone system at Waste Management in 1988, so same exact system. So I don't know when we installed this one here, but I, I also installed another one in, at another job in about 2000. They use a similar system to that, but, yeah, that's
Never talked to anyone on my office phone. It's always my cellphone.
Right.
People call me on, and, you know, I actually say I don't even need an office phone. Maybe we should look at cutting back office phones.
It's each individual, each individual person has a cellphone in this day and age.
Yeah, well.
And most people
No, just turn the office phone off. I mean, take it out, is what I'm saying.
And you, give people your cellphone.
Give people the cellphone.
Excellent, absolutely. That's like, oh, if somebody wants my phone number, I give them my cellphone.
Meet your cellphone number.
Something maybe you should look at.
So I have an office in this building, so I'll defer, but I think that if there's a published list or whatever of office numbers that
Publish the cellphone. Publish the cellphone, if, if we do that, I mean, that's
Yeah, the city, the city sells.
We're paying about $40 per cellphone per month, so that might get absorbed, but I
What's the, what's the service?
The reason for landline was when fax is a bit big. I don't have a landline at home anymore. My fax machine's dead.
Yeah, well, a lot of people don't, but I, I know I use my desk phone, and, and everybody in my department uses theirs, and Moss uses a desk phone for the Citizen Response Center, the police have to have them for their, the police would have to have a landline.
What is the service like in the building with the cellphones? Like, if you were using your cellphone, is it pretty good everywhere because?
I never have trouble using it anywhere in the building.
I don't say, because I know where I work at, sometimes your, like, your cellphone doesn't work in some places, and if there was an emergency, you'd be cut off in that part of the building, so you still have an office phone to get through, I mean, just, I don't know.
That might be a good reason to keep
I have a suggestion. Might want to do maybe a pilot project with one or two departments that might be willing to give up the landline and see how it works, especially in terms of, you know, making sure we have a really good directory, so residents or vendors or whoever can make sure they get in contact with them. I think the downside is that you maybe don't want to expect people to be on-call 24/7, but maybe there's a way to do what the mayor suggests, but not wholesale right in the beginning, so, so we don't cut off a means of communication that we might later discover that we need, so anyhow, just maybe it's a way to, to test.
Cellphone system is terrible anyway. I don't even turn mine on half the time, because I still get messages from Verizon or whoever the hell it is, telling me that, I won't mention the guy's name, I, I've never met him, but he never pays his bill, so I keep on getting these things saying, your phone will be shut off if you don't pay your bill.
On your city phone?
Yeah. He told, he told me he'd be more trouble to give me another number, because
I'll make sure they get on paying those bills.
Be paired with somebody else.
Yeah, I know.
We pay our bill every month.
No, the phone
They used to belong to, the phone number used to belong to somebody else.
It was Sonia's before.
Yeah.
And I got it, but again, this, this is not Sonia.
It wasn't her, it went back to the person that owned that number. Wow.
So I just let people know my, my regular cell.
Well, I, I bet we could get you a new phone number on that.
He told me it would, same thing could happen, and I might get a woman who doesn't pay her bill. So I didn't, I said, okay, guys, go have fun. I've been around some programs that are, you know, I had in years, PrEP is an example, the way they have their technology, of course, they have money to, to buy the best all the time, but we're light-years behind, we really are.
Anything else on this?
I would say that we would start out with costing that out.
Right, that's something to work on.
Checking out whether it's savings or not.
You folks all use your city hall phone? All the time?
With a city cellphone? Yeah, I, I use my city phone. It has some of the best reception over my personal when I'm in the Blasco Library or sometimes in City Hall. or sometimes in City Hall. And I check my email and I respond to
Yeah, not everybody wants everybody having their personal cell number. Especially if you're just, you know, if you're, I don't know, our accounts payable people or our payroll people might not want everybody having their personal numbers. Yeah. So
It's conundrum, is what I'm saying.
Because they don't want to get called at two in the morning because somebody had a question about their paycheck or something.
Or their snow wasn't blown.
That could happen, yeah. All right, so the next department is on page thirty-five, the Office of Purchasing. And that's, that's just Andrea, and that's just one person, our purchasing manager, and her expenses. And most of it's advertising. Most of her expenses are in advertising for bid openings and, yeah. Okay, the print shop, page thirty-six. Only thing of note on this page, it's just the one employee and the expenses for office supplies have gone up because the price of paper has gone up considerably due to inflation. And it's still going up. And the repair and maintenance services is contracts on the equipment. Okay, page sixty-one is your general government. Page twenty-one in your handout is a general government overview, which has some breakdowns of some of the larger line items in the general government. The employee payouts is for all the retirees, all of their accrued sick and vacation pay that we owe them. And we, we calculated the payouts for those employees that we knew would be retiring. We had some police and fire. We asked all the department heads if they had anybody that was retiring. And then there's always a few surprise people, so we added to that. So, we're just a little bit shy of our twenty-two budget, but if you, I mean, you can see that we've exceeded our twenty-two budget. The worst was in twenty-twenty when we had like twelve people retire in January, firefighters. So, you can see that that was much higher in twenty. Unemployment, that's mostly the golf and, let's see, sometimes we'll have somebody in refuse or sewer that collects unemployment. But, yeah, that, there's no way to predict that, so we just kind of went with our average. The professional services include audit fees, that's Zelen Kofsky-Naxrod, Burckheimer Tax Administration fees for collecting the taxes, payroll taxes. Employer Employee Services, they do things for HR. Legal services, that's Eldrickin. And other lawyers, if we have any fees for, if we've got a big, I don't know, a big grievance or anything like that that's beyond what we've got in the legal budget, that'll come out of here. Manufacturers Association, banking, legal and professional, just miscellaneous fees. Central Square Maintenance Agreement, our software agreement, is ninety-two thousand dollars a year. Actuarial Services, the security services. Industrial appraisal, we're going to have, we're supposed to do a big, complete inventory every five years. Five years would have been twenty-two, but we're going to do it in twenty-three. The education and training, we, we always put a little bit more in the general fund because there's always, we have people from the police department. We send people to the Central Square for training this summer. We sent four people to that, or three, I'm sorry. If somebody's budget is exceeded, we'll take the funds out of, out of the general government rather than forego the training, because training's important. Forty-fifty-nine other services and charges include the bond fees that we pay to B N Y Mellon, the cost allocation plan, that's an audit fee, all licenses, interpreter services. We're interpreting a lot, a lot more things, you know, now that we've got a liaison to the new Americans. So, she's put a lot of interpretative services in play. The data center, that, that's, that's the police data, I believe. The Act Thirty-two Collectors Association, just a whole bunch of different associations, Pell Raz, League of Cities, the Quantella Public Wi-Fi Bill, U S Conference of Mayors, Risk and Safety. We have a risk and safety consultant coming out of here and CAT TV.
Does the police department use the interpreter?
The Risk, Risk Department?
The Police Department.
Police Department. If they need to, they do. I don't know that, in, a lot of the interpretation is, is documents that we have going out in our calendars and things like that. I don't know, our interpreter service that we have, it's like a phone service that you can use? We haven't used that a lot. We haven't had call to use that a lot, but if you can find an employee that speaks
I was just questioning, God forbid, but, you know, you have to arrest someone that doesn't speak English.
Yeah.
You know, okay, so you arrest him or her and you bring him in, now what?
Right. Yeah. Well, they've been doing that for years, and I think that this is, she's, Niken's just getting everybody trained on how to access these services and all that, so I imagine we're going to be using them more in the future. And our immigrant population is increasing, so we'll probably be using it more.
The National Institute has a group that does that, too.
Yeah, yeah, we've got lots of resources in Erie.
So, what does the risk and safety consultant do?
We have to have one, and I think the fact that we're not required to comply with OSHA because we're a government unit, this guy kind of takes, takes the place of meeting OSHA guidelines. He makes sure, he comes in and he helps study our programs. He helps present programs for training. I think Chris went through everything that they did during his risk management. They did chainsaw training was the last one that I can think of. He looks at our safety equipment and I know they did something a couple, they did something a couple of years ago with safety shoes. He just makes recommendations in order to help us have fewer claims. The contingency is there because we haven't finished negotiations with the Teamsters. And we have to put something in there. The Council of Governments, these last six or seven are just organizations that we contribute to. The Council of Governments Economic and the DID, Downtown Improvement District, Fair Housing, E M T A.
What do we get from the CAG? My years doing the neighborhood was that we were able to buy salt in bulk.
Well, I've gone, I've gone to training there and I know we have purchasing leverage.
What kind of training did you go for?
How, it was about budgeting.
You do a good job then.
Yeah, that's the only one I went to, but I know there's other trainings.
I was on the original CAG, you know, the windy place.
No.
Still spinning its wheels for the most part.
Let's see, we've got the cable access TV. We pay the gas at the Erie Zoo. Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership and real estate taxes that we pay on some properties that we own. I've got a stack of them upstairs, but I don't, I don't, I
Leave a stack up there.
Yeah. I think I have to pay them in the next month or so, but I really couldn't, I couldn't say. So, that, I think that's all the departments that I was going to go over the expenses for, so we can go to general fund revenues now. I said fund, not fun. That would be on page sixteen. The real estate taxes were calculated at ninety percent of assessed value. That's about what we normally collect every year, and it's, it goes back years that we always hit somewhere right around ninety percent. The prior are just based on an average number that we collect every year of prior Erie income taxes. The interim, I noticed that the twenty-two is way up. Interim taxes are charged if somebody does some sort of improvement in their tax bill, goes up after, after they've already been billed. And this three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand that we, I budgeted ten thousand for next year. The three-hundred-and-fifteen this year is basically one big ticket item. It was Erie Insurance was made up three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand of that. Appropriation of restricted fund balance, that is, that's what we need to balance the budget, basically. That is, those are the funds from the water reserve, the water lease prepayment from several years ago.
Basically cut that in half from what the original proposal was from all the, that's where we really, because we wanted to save another three million for next year, for the twenty-twenty-four budget.
The next few taxes are basically income-based taxes, the special levy for pension, income tax, non-resident income tax, resident. I calculated all those based on, I extended this year out what we should be receiving for the rest of this year and increased it by a few percentage points, figuring that people will be getting raises. I'm hoping that's the case. And we also expect a small increase of non-residents because a lot of the Erie Insurance people were working from home. And during that time period, and they're just starting to come back now, but during the period that they were working from home, they were not paying non-resident City of Erie income tax. Really, transfer taxes went way, that's thirty-one eighty-two. That went way up this year, and we brought it back down for next year. Yeah, we're, we're at, we were at one-point-seven million on October seventh versus a million-dollar budget, basically. So, that, there was a lot of real estate activity this year, and I don't expect with the current economy for that to continue. The local service tax, going up a little bit. People hoping that, you know, our employment numbers grow, like I said. The parking tax revenue? It's, right now, we have our five-hundred thousand in there that's supposed to come from the Parking Authority. So far, we haven't gotten that this year, and I don't know if we're going to get it, but we, we had to put it in the budget.
I advocated for years to do something with the real estate taxes. Right now, people can be up to their third year in their arrears before there's a sheriff's sale. And they, when I talked in the past about it, they said, well, we keep it at three years because the paperwork of keeping track was so tough. We have computers now, so you want to make a buck, change that to two years instead of three. And watch how the, I won't mention names, but if you go over there and look at the book, you're going to see people with money owing six figures at least. They play that game. Two years and ten months behind, they make one year's payment. You're still two years behind. If we went to two years, you wouldn't need a tax increase. I'm not sure how, if it's down to state, or if it's by our ordinance, or if it's county ordinance, I don't know. But I was kind of blindsided when I asked that question last time. It's something I'd bring up, because there's a ton of money out there. You know, we're talking about some landlords who do that all the time. They have forty-five properties and they're all two years or six months behind.
Yeah, I've been dealing with that for a long time. As long as I've been on here, we've been fighting it long.
And I understood it in the past where they said that, you know, because of the paperwork involved of tracking it, we couldn't keep up with it. But with the computers that we have today, you press a button, you find out who's there in their third year. We find out, oh, I'll give you some names, not publicly, but I, because I researched it once before. And you'd be very, very surprised, the people that do it.
Some payments because people, with the, with the money, with all this money that we've gotten to give to help businesses, if you're behind your real estate tax, we're not giving you any money. So, that's resulted in some more.
Those folks with businesses aren't usually the ones that are playing those games. The money people are the ones that play those games.
Well, no, at one point, we had that situation and Mario threatened to put the names in the paper and a lot of money came in right away.
We did that with the refuse fees a while back, right?
I'm sorry to digress.
Yeah, no. The license and permits are in the next section. Oh, the, the real estate penalty is, we're expecting it to go down because the collections are up, the percentage of collections is doing well. As far as license and permits. We kind of depended on the various departments that were in charge of these permits and these programs to help us with these budgets. A lot of these went way down during the pandemic and they're coming back, so we're just being, we're, we're being optimistic with some of them, like, you know, the, well, I didn't get to the amusement tax yet, but we're, we're hoping that amusement licenses increase and vendor, vendor licenses, we're just holding the line on and the bandwagon and special events, we're hoping for an increase in, in that revenue, just with people coming back and concerts coming back and things like that. There's, there's four line items here that the Department of Neighborhood Resources decided to implement a new technology fee on building demo, moving permits, electric, electrical and inspection permits, or electrical inspection permits, I'm sorry, fence, furnace and sign permits, plumbing inspection. Those, those items are now going to have a fifteen dollar technology fee added and that's going to add about ninety thousand dollars worth of revenue and that's in this budget. I know that when David Forrest comes to talk next week about his budget, they've also, now costed out a number of their other fees that we can increase and Victoria helped them with, cost out all their anticipated revenues from new fees that are not in this budget. So he'll probably, he'll talk to you about that. I think he's got a presentation on that next week. The rental licenses and rental double fees are just, we're just, just projecting those based on prior years. Same with the cable TV. The, the grant section, we've got, we've got money from PennDOT coming in and that is, let's see, I have all this. I brought my notes. Yeah, PennDOT is a per mile maintenance payment to transfer to local, to the local government. And I believe that's based on the roads that we plow. The PA Department of Environmental Resources, that's related to the recycling program. Our insurance fraud grant comes from the state of Pennsylvania and the auto theft grant. Those are police grants. The PCCD is the Pennsylvania Criminal and Delinquency Grant. That's federal money coming through the state. Shared Revenue Public Utility. We get that based on what's collected, what would have been collected from utilities if they weren't exempt. The alcoholic beverage tax, that was down and it's coming back up. State aid pension system, that's, that's coming up a little bit. And liquid fuel. We haven't gotten that money in yet this year, but it's usually around the same amount. How much we're getting this year? I believe we get the budgeted amount, I think it's a hundred and forty-four thousand. Yeah, that, that's, I think they, they give us that number in advance. Okay, the payment in lieu of taxes. We, that is dropping a little bit, but, but for a good reason. We've had two different businesses that were nonprofits and they were on this payment in lieu of tax report last year, who are fully taxable now. So we were collecting fifty percent last year and now we're collecting one hundred percent. Saint Mary. Yeah. And I know Dave Forrest is working on a committee to, for lack of a better term, to start looking at those pilot agreements and reaching out to people. Including the school district and the county in, in the outreach. Okay, the next section is service fees, that's zoning, adminis, real estate fees, towing fees. And just other miscellaneous, the quality of life.
What percentage do we get from a tow?
We get a flat rate, is, Tori, is that fifty dollars on a tow? Sixty, okay. And we get a percentage of their storage, like if they charge per day that they store it, we get a percentage of that, don't we? Yeah. It's been a while since I've done that. Yeah. Then when we get to the fines, the, the parking fines, those have dropped. We, we had a blip in the middle of twenty twenty-two where our average, we were in a high three thousands of tickets written per month for a long time. And then I think when we up the, increased the fees, it came down to about three thousand, but we were in, we were around two thousand for a while in twenty-two. We, we had some really low months and I think it might have had something to do with a staffing shortage. But I don't, I don't know what's going to happen next year with the new parking regulations and whether we're going to get fewer tickets, if people are going to feed the meters more and pay, try to avoid the tickets. It's, it's kind of a big guess, but.
Where is the Parking Authority? We usually get, what, five hundred thousand from them?
Yeah.
And we're not?
We have not been able to negotiate our municipal, what is that, a cooperation agreement, Mayor?
Why don't we just sell them to a for-profit organization and wipe that whole thing off? Yeah, for us and get taxes out of it.
We get parking taxes from all the other ramps.
A for-profit, that parking ramp would become taxable.
People would pay a lot more to pay a parking for profit.
I don't think so. I, you know, there's quite a few lots around here right now that are privately owned. They're not astronomically different than what we have.
I'd have to see that to believe it.
Try One Hundred Beach for one of them. It's privately owned. Don't be a doubting Thomas. I'm just saying we're losing money because for some reason we couldn't get, well, there was anybody blocking anyway during the COVID end. Somebody was, you know, breaking a law, there was nobody down here to do it. Something's fishy over there and we can't get any answers as the Parking Authority. We got an invitation to go see the ramps, see the kind of shape they're in. That's the first time we've seen or heard him in my three years, anyway. Part of it, I'm not saying get rid of it, but we should take a real good look at it and find out why we're not being able to get the money from it that we.
Supposed to legally.
It's a sacred cow or what, but we should know.
So in theory, their revenue should increase from the changes in the parking fines. And so I don't know by how much, if you quantitatively punch in however many tickets there are and how many go thirty days or, you know, how many were being paid within thirty days at the old rate that will be at the new rate now.
Our, our revenues will not increase.
Right.
Oh, you're talking to the Parking Authority.
Revenue may increase, which may in turn make them, give them more money, which they may can execute the agreement with, that's all. I don't know how much it is or isn't.
I was talking to the executive director and we were, we were talking about their revenues will be going up and their costs might decrease. They, only writing one ticket a day, they won't have as many cars to ticket, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how many people they've got around to double-double, but I can imagine, you know, it's, I hope it's not a lot, but I can imagine that's one burden that the city can take, you know?
I'd have to look at.
Someone doing two tickets in, in one afternoon, you know?
I'd, I'd have to look at how often that happens. I mean, I, I don't know that that happens a lot.
Yeah, see, I can imagine someone being completely outraged.
All right, the rest of those fines are, we, we just basically, we base them on prior years and what we've done so far this year. The state police fines, traffic court, traffic court's the booting program. The parking, traffic court costs and the district justice fines.
So have they actually used this office at all since they were supposed to be set up to be in City Hall?
The courthouse?
They were saying that they were going to make City Hall a, have a court.
I think it, I, I'm aware of one instance where that happened, but there might have been multiples that I just wasn't aware of. Yeah.
Yeah, or at least court, I don't know at what extent they were going to do it, but I hadn't seen any, not regular, so, okay.
Yeah, I think it was more for an emergency venue for, for the federal court.
Yeah, they used to be back here, back in the day, they had full traffic court staffed by magistrate.
Keep in mind that the city planner is talking about moving forward with the housing or the bike court and that, I don't know where that would take place, but it's possible that could also be at City Hall. I don't know for sure, but I know that that's a priority that he has talked about.
Next section, miscellaneous includes investment income. We, we based our interest income on the last couple of months and what we've been getting versus the beginning of the year. Specialist assessments, rents and royalties, all those are pretty much based on averages. The contribution is a little optimistic, the last, I mean, for the last couple of years, we've gotten a couple hundred thousand dollars in contributions every year, but I, I, right now, at this point this year, we've gotten six hundred and fifteen dollars and I know there's about twenty or thirty thousand coming, but I don't know where any additional contributions are coming from this year. So I kind of split the difference and hope for the best. The reimbursements, see, there is a page in your council book that details out the CDBG reimbursement and the ARP reimbursement. Shout it out if you find it. I didn't write that one down. Ninety-seven?
Nine and ten.
Nine and ten. We don't have ninety-seven pages. Okay. So the, most of the administrative staff in the local match department are reimbursed in whole or in part by the CDBG funds. And what you've got here are their titles and their wages. And the reimbursement percentage column, which is second from the right, will tell you how much of their time is spent on reimbursable activities and how much money we're going to receive from CDBG. That's on page ten. Yeah. We're going to be receiving nine hundred and eighty-five thousand this year. That's been higher in prior years because we were receiving reimbursement for code enforcement employees, which we opted not to do this year. The HUD reimbursement requirements for documentation and, and other things that we must do to be eligible to receive the money are getting too cumbersome to be worth. Yeah, it's, it's, it's making that department unproductive. No, I shouldn't say unproductive, it's making it hard for them to get their job done when they're required to do all this documentation. The previous page, page nine, is all of your programs that are being reimbursed with ARP money. The police have the crisis car. And the juvenile unit.
They have? When's the crisis car going to hit the road?
That is going, the juvenile unit is going to hit the road in January and the crisis car will be starting in May.
May?
They are right now training nine, they hired nine officers at the end of June and they have to go through their training. They're hiring nine more officers in December and then we'll start training them. When the nine officers are trained and ready to go out on the streets, we, they will assign eight Class A officers and one sergeant. we, they will assign eight Class A officers and one sergeant to the crisis car. And like I said, in, in January, there's gonna be three detectives and one detective sergeant assigned to the juvenile unit.
How many in the crisis car? You said one sergeant?
Eight.
Yeah, there's one sergeant, and there's eight officers.
Is it a car or a van?
Uh. Three shifts.
He said eight?
Three shifts, seven days a week.
Eight in the car, oh, okay.
And there'll be two people in that car.
Two people in the car, right.
All right, gotcha.
And that's something that City Council's gonna have to approve to move forward. That'll be paid for by ARP funding. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to address it.
And then there's three patrol, three Class A and two lieutenants in patrol operations that'll also be paid for out of ARP. The ARP administration is the program manager and the finance manager, seventy percent of the finance manager's salary. And coming up in twenty-two, these employees are, are not on the payroll yet, but the Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources will be adding a GIS administrator, data analyst, and a grant reporting and compliance specialist. Right now, the grant reporting for, is, is spread out across the building. The HUD department, I mean, the Economic Development has their grants. The Police Department has grants, and they have a grant administrator for those. Public Works and FIRE do not have grant administrators, so their grants are either being, Public Works, each person has their own grants to manage.
Castillo does a great job with the Fire Department.
And the Fire Department, they do the operational part, and I do the financial part of it. So I do all the closeouts and the financial reporting. And they work with Abby on bringing the grants in and doing the budgets and getting the grants and managing them. So we, we could really use one person to bring all that together, and if we can do that using ARP money. And I know the plan is to find other grant money to fund that in the future, once the ARP funds are gone. The data, data analyst, we're not really doing a good job of reporting out where all this grant money is going and what we're accomplishing with it, so I think the data analyst is gonna help us do that and help on the reporting. And when you get a grant, you've got quarterly or biannual reporting to do on what your accomplishments are on these grants, so that's the data analyst position. And the GIS administrator, right now, I believe are, I don't, I don't know what her name is, what her position is, but she's managing grants for the neighborhood resource and handling all the GIS administration. It's, it's, and we're, we're doing more and more with, what's the, I'm sorry, it's, it's that geo-tracking? Yeah, so there's a lot more departments that are using that now. And we're gonna need somebody to manage that. So those are the three positions that they wanna add using grant money.
Regarding the grant management and tracking, and whatever grant dollars we use internally, we're tracking to see if in fact we are using it accordingly to the grant regulations, correct?
Right.
Are we doing the same thing for those external organizations that we provide dollars to? To, organization A got a hundred thousand, said they're gonna do A, B, and C. Do we know they did A, B, and C, or they did X, Y, and Z with it?
We are tracking that when, once the grant, the ARP manager came on board. She and I sat down and, and worked up a system of tracking so that we're following with our beneficiaries all the same rules that we have to follow to get our grant money. So we're requiring quarterly reports from them, and we're requiring documentation of what they're spending the money on in order to, we've got them all on a reimbursement basis. So we see what they're spending, what they've spent the money on before we reimburse it. And we're also, yeah, I just lost my train of thought. But yeah, we are, we are tracking it. Oh, if they, that's, if they need to change their, we require a budget from them, and we have them sign a contract. And if they need to change that budget for some reason, they have to run it by us first. We have to approve the changes, so basically all the same rules that are present in, with our HUD interactions or our state grant contracts. We do the same thing with our recipients.
Are there exceptions to that rule?
Sort of a day in the life of Jackie Strice sometime. I know she's been working on, you know, creating a dashboard for us, but maybe there's a way to show, you know, visually or with numbers, you know, this is, you know, sort of a, a tracking system to reassure everybody that it's being tracked. I know she's doing a good job on that, but maybe there's a way to visually or with spreadsheet or something, I know she had sent us something recently, but just to show people what a typical tracking system would be for a, an ARP grant.
Yeah, we can, we can go over that with you.
Well, I was gonna say, so I know a lot of the sub-recipient's were, well, I know we signed agreements with everybody, but I know some of the sub, some of the recipients weren't under the same, you spend it, reimburse you, program. And so could you maybe speak to that? How are they being tracked?
Do you have an example?
Specifically, the.
EDDC.
The redevelopment authority and the economic development weren't under the same rules as the centers and stuff, where you gave them their money, you didn't ask them to spend it and then come back with the receipt. And so, so I just want, as a clarification, the how is that being tracked? Is it being tracked in the same, well, it's obviously, it's a different mechanism, but is it being, how is it being tracked?
I don't have all my notes with me, so I can't give you the exact definitions, but the, we have beneficiaries and we have sub-recipient's. The sub-recipient's have a, like EDDC and RACE and DECD have to follow all of the federal rules, the uniform guide, in the uniform guidance as any grant recipient would have to. That's, it's a higher level of scrutiny. They are, like I said, considered a sub-recipient, and they are entrusted to manage their grant and report back to us, so their money is received ahead of time. The beneficiaries are, they are a, a different level of scrutiny. We, we, they do not have to worry about the uniform guidance. They don't have to worry about whether they're complying with the rules, because we're doing that for them. So it's, it's a different, there's definitions for both of those situations in the ARP guidance. And if you'd like to delve into that more, we can schedule, like Liz asked, for a study session with Jackie and myself.
Okay, I, I understand it, it just seems, you know. Never mind. So I, I, I understand the system, but, you know, but, but it's two systems. You have to understand, it is two systems, where one, we gave the money to the people, and then we're gonna expect to report back, and the other, we asked them to do the expenditures, and then told them to come back with the receipts, and we'll give them the money. And, and the, and the, how to say, the largest pots of these money were in the, in the first category. And so it's just, it's just something that I, I've noticed, and I'm, so we'll, we'll talk offline about it, but we, we need, we need to tighten up and track everybody, and look at those nine nineties.
Do we need two different systems based on where the grant is coming from? For example, HUD may require something, and another funding source from the state may require, even though they given money basically for the same type of project?
No, I think, I think we're talking about all ARP money, and we're talking about two different levels of recipient. And the sub-recipient's are larger organizations that do a lot of grant, a lot of their funding comes from federal grants. They've already got the systems in place to keep, to, to keep track of things. They already know the uniform requirements very well, and they are equipped to be sub-recipient's. The beneficiaries, on the other hand, are receiving funding. They don't have to report back. They don't have to follow any of these requirements. They don't have to learn all the ins and outs of federal grant accounting. They, they, basically, they just tell us what they plan to spend the money on. They do whatever it is they told us they were gonna spend the money on, and we reimburse them. So their accounting system's a lot more, a lot simpler. And we do hold the sub-recipient's accountable, but the federal government also holds them accountable. They, they could get audited.
But they all have to spend the money according to the American Rescue Plan rules. If they don't, we're gonna have to pay it back, so we're making sure that they spend it that way.
Yeah, I think I'm all done there. We, anybody have any other questions about revenue?
How can we get more?
You know, I really meant to look up that list that Liz, we copied everything down that Liz wrote on the whiteboard a couple of years ago, and we, we typed it up in a Word document, and I meant to bring that with me, but I, I forgot. But that's, that's a question that we should not address just during budget time. I think we need to address that year-round.
Michael say goodnight, you're running this.
So, is that everything? Are we sure? Okay, you have anything else, Liz? You have anything else, Liz?
I think we're, I, I don't think we need anything else tonight, and next week's a biggie, right, Lisa? As, all of them have been important. But would you just be able to recap for our viewing audience and for council, what we are going to be doing, I think it's a week from tonight, correct, on the twenty-ninth? That's when we'll have Neighborhood Resource, and what else do we have on that day?
Neighborhood Resources, HR, I think we're going to go over the five-year projections.
Question the other day, do we ever go back to PFM and ask them what COVID reaction, what kind of a reaction did COVID have on the five-year plan?
No.
Why not?
Hey, Dad, Dad, I'm happy to email Gordon Mann and just see what, how he might respond before next week, if I can get him, okay?
Super, yeah.
The guy who was our PFM.
That's why I'm asking.
I'm holding on as fast as I can. I mean, I'm.
You're, you're doing a great job with that. I just have problems talking about a five-year plan when the world stopped for damn near a year and a half. We still don't have the people coming back.
Right.
Downtown, you know, until we get area insurance running a hundred percent, yeah, we're pretty close, pretty close. Thank God for them, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, you all. Bye.
I'll be going to Mel's.